Okay, with that, we'll bring together the formal portion of our meeting and the call to order. Supervisor McCartney?
Do you want to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, yeah, we get, well, I was going to call you all to order. Yes, sorry. Do the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you for correcting me there. First, will you give him the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you Supervisor McCartney, I've got a cold, so I'm not 100%.
That's okay.
With that, are you?
I am here, yes.
Supervisor Grunier?
I am here as well.
Supervisor Blundy?
Here.
And Supervisor Ross is unable to join us tonight, he has a work situation he is dealing with and will not be able to attend. So we do have a quorum, and I'm going to go with the community announcements. Before I go into the formal portion, I want to take a moment to thank everybody on the Historical Commission for an amazing event on Saturday. It was the second Slate Hill Cemetery event, and, you know, every year, it continues to get better. Last year, I thought there was one guy who was an actor, I believe was a Tony-nominated actor, was tremendous. This year, I think the best reenactor was a 13-year-old girl who played Gladys, someone who was buried just outside the confines of the cemetery. And it's always a tremendous opportunity for people in the community. It was entirely packed, it was wonderful, and I wanted to take a moment to thank everybody on the Historical Commission for an amazing job, and all the volunteers. It was just awesome. And I can see some folks who were actually there at the same time, they had a great time with that. So this is the portion where we go through, and if there's special announcements, you know, residents or youth organizations have, you can contact the township at admin@lmT to request a special announcement. Again, if you have free time on the weekends and like to volunteer your time, you can join the Friends of Five Mile Woods cleanup days, they're held the second Saturday of the month at Five Mile Woods, starting at 8:30 a.m. Please come in comfortable shoes, you don't want to miss it, it's going to be fun. On October 26th, the 11th Annual Slay Sarcoma 5K Run/Walk will be held at the Core Creek Park in Langhorne, Pennsylvania. The primary objective of this event is to raise awareness and research funding for Leo My Sarcoma. The Lower Makefield Township's Environmental Advisory Council is hosting another styrofoam and recycling event this Saturday, yep, that's this Saturday, October 26th, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. in the parking lot of the Township building. So if you've got all those styrofoam peanuts, or whatever you've gotten from Amazon, or all those online retailers, and you want to get rid of them in a safe way...
No peanuts.
No peanuts.
No peanuts.
All right. If you've got, they can do the airbags now, right?
They do send airbags, but if you have peanuts that you want to recycle, some of the Mail &amp; More stores will take them, but they cannot take them at the recycle event.
Excellent. Lower Makefield Township is also hosting a blood drive for the Red Cross on Friday, November 1st, from 12 to 5 p.m. in the, right here, actually, in this meeting room, you can sign up for it. If you go to the Red Cross website, I'll be, I've already signed up, the sponsor code is Lower Makefield, but you can choose if that time doesn't work for you on November 1st between 12 and 5, you can select other places. Again, that's redcrossblood.org. On November 9th, Lower Makefield Township will be hosting its first annual Arbor Day celebration at 10 a.m. at the municipal building, that's right here, 1100 Edgewood Drive. And then, same day, November 9th, Saturday, will be our Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony, and the parade starts at 1 p.m. on Edgewood and Longacre, and concludes at a ceremony at Veterans Square. There is a special surprise, we are going to have a flyover, so if, this is going to be, you don't want to miss this one. For more information, you visit our website at lmt.org, or call 267-274-1105. Again, Veterans Day Parade, November 9th. And with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. So quickly, here's the rules of the road on this. If you have comments on something that's not on the agenda, this is your chance to come up and share those with us. If you have something on the agenda, including things like budgeting, we're going to be talking about certain departments today, we would ask that you save those for that portion of the agenda. I'm not seeing anybody in line, and I'm not seeing any, oh, we've got a few, if you could come up to the dais, and we would just ask if you could, oh, share your name, and whether or not you live in Lower Makefield Township.
My name is Haseeb Abdurrahman. I'm a representative of Zubeta Foundation, right here in the community, right across the street from Charles Bay Mental School. And I just have a few words that I want to say, but I wanted to give this to the township. This is called by the Board of Supervisors, those who are present and those who are unfortunately not here. Okay? So, the reason why I'm here, and I've been here before, and I've come here to give thanks and appreciation to a couple of departments here. Number one, in my, and I'm speaking for, on behalf of Zubeta Foundation, as well as myself personally, I want to congratulate Police Chief Kenneth Kalusi. I'm congratulating him once again, because in the police department, under which he is the leader of that department, you see far too often, the police department here in Lower Makefield gets, in my opinion, absolutely zero credit. The police do a phenomenal, fantastic job. They have been doing it before Zubeta Foundation came into existence, henceforth, 2005. And so, we came in with the idea, or with the objective, that we're going to do everything that we can to partner with the police department. Because if anything happens on the campus of Zubeta Foundation, then quite naturally, the first place we're going to call, outside of the fire department, is the police department. They have been cooperative with them, with us, and we strive every day to be cooperative with them. So my thanks and appreciation to Police Chief Kalusi and his staff. I met with Police Chief Kalusi just 48 hours ago, in his office. He was, let me tell you the kind of man that he is. He was gracious enough, first of all, I've come into the office, he didn't even know I was coming. I'm coming to make an appointment. I'm giving my card to the secretary in the office on that day, and I said, "I'm here, this is who I am, this is the organization I represent, can you please see..." I'm requesting an appointment to see the police chief. Lo and behold, a few seconds later, she comes in, she said, "Police chief, is it welcome you in?" I mean, you know, I already know him, you know? So we were able to engage. And so what I'm saying now, and I told the police chief that I'm going to come to the meeting, when is the next meeting? He told me it was tonight, and I said, "I'm coming in to give kudos." Well deserved, because like I said, they don't get it. They get nothing, and this is not only the police in Lower Makefield, this is across the United States of America. The police get zero credit. But the first telephone calls, the calls in from any local community, let alone national or international, is the police. So I salute Police Chief, I salute the rank-and-file members of his, and it is not to be taken for granted. So, and it's very important that I get that noted. So, again, and we'll continue to build on the partnership that we have, because we feel that it can also be enhanced. Also, I want to give thanks and appreciation and kudos to the Parks and Recreation. I could be up here all day, and I know I've only got a couple minutes, okay? Thanks for all that they do. Magnificent park, it goes back, we've raised three young boys and a daughter in this area over the years. That park over there, that swimming pool over there is magnificent, they enjoyed their lifestyle of growing up. This is a wonderful district to live in, they didn't have to walk, they didn't have to worry about going to school and looking behind their back, and coming home and begging mom and dad, "Can you please look out for us?" Because there's so much violence that is prevalent, you see, they have these gangs across the country, and look what we're dealing with right now with the drugs and all of that. So, my thanks and appreciation to them. And also the grounds, the grounds department, those who help keep the grounds maintenance spotless. This is a community that we are honored to be a part of, and our kudos to the entire world. I mean, the world would be a better place if you had people coming up and saying the beautiful things that I'm saying right now, rather than to hear the complaints that you all receive daily. So my kudos to the Board of Supervisors. And I close out, and I want to thank you all. I'm sorry if I inconvenienced, or if I said anything that may have ill feelings, that's not where we are coming from. We are here to add to the community here, to the progress, development, enhancement, upliftment of the community. This is what Zubeta Foundation is all about. March 1st begins Ramadan, which is the period of fasting, 30 days, fasting from sunup to sundown. It is hopeful, we're going to extend an invitation to not only the Board of Supervisors, but the entire community, because we're going to have an interfaith gathering, and it is hopeful that we can get you all to come in and sit with us for just a few minutes to taste of our delicious food. And so I'll close out with that. Thank you so much for giving me a moment, and right now, the last prayer, because you know Muslims pray five times a day, each and every day, and we have our problems right now going on in the world. Still, the interfaith dialogue is so critically important. So we are launching a renewed effort to get out in the community, to visit the Jewish community, to visit the Christian community, because the common ground is we, those three main religions, we have something in common. And we hope to make this world a better world, we only have a short time to be on this plane of existence. I don't know, as we say in Islam, when the death angel will come knocking on my door, I pray that I'm be ready. In the meantime, let's do these good deeds as a stew and together. And I thank you so much. I have to get back to the mosque, because the last prayer is at Eteqah. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other members of the public?
Lee Pedowitz, 247 Truman Way, I'm a taxpaying resident of Lower Makefield Township. Good evening Chair Lewis, Supervisors, Chief Kalusi, and other Lower Makefield Township officials, and residents of Lower Makefield Township. In trying to find a resolution to the ordinance and code violations that were incorporated in the design and construction of the Regency at Yardley Development two weeks ago on October 9th, I met with Representative Perry Warren, Representative Jared G. Solomon, who's the Chairman of the Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness Committee, and Michael Hillman, who's the Executive Director of the Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness Committee. I also met separately with Rosemary Wrenchill, Chief of Staff for Senator Santa Sierra. I explained to them the issues I'm having with the gates and island installations in the Regency at Yardley community, and the responses of the Township Board of Supervisors to my concerns. I sent a copy of my notes to Mr. Kratzler. Representatives Warren Solomon, Rosemary Wrenchill, and Mr. Hillman had no comments on them as written. Representative Solomon and Mr. Hillman agreed to investigate and let me know what I need to do to get this matter resolved. No gates have been installed on the entrances/exits at the carriage house side of the development. A fire department vehicle was brought over and could enter. Based on what was demonstrated on the Renaissance Boulevard entrance, where a fire truck couldn't enter with the gate and island installation, this was not a valid test, despite being told that the approvals went through a vigorous SALDO review process. The Regency at Yardley, by definition, is not a gated community. A gated community is defined by a physical barrier, such as a wall, fence, or gate, that limits access to residents and their guests. Regency at Yardley is accessible to the public, there is no wall, there is no fence. The gates will not provide security. There is unrestricted pedestrian access from Oxford Valley Road, Dobree Road, Big Oak Road, and I-295, and that's been proven many times. It is obvious that not having gates makes accessibility for emergency apparatus that much easier. I have a couple of questions for the Board. At the September 18th Board meeting, I requested that the Township engineer look at the gate island installations and render his or her professional opinion as to whether or not they met the applicable codes at the time of design and construction. I ask, was this done?
You asked that question on September 18th?
September 18th, I made a request, and it's in the minutes, that I wanted the Township engineer to take a look at the entrances and exits, and give his or her professionalist opinion as to whether or not they met with the codes in effect at the time of design and construction.
Yeah, as we talked about previously in August, the Township had investigated your claims and did refer your claims to the solicitor who reviewed them. And in this particular case, we rendered a letter explaining the situation to you, and we also demonstrated entrance into that gate process, with a video of our largest apparatus entering the gate. When you ask for us to ask our professionals to do stuff, that incurs costs. And costs are borne by not just you, but all taxpayers. So we have to be judicious in whether we use our professional services to answer questions in this case. In this particular circumstance, your HOA has all of the power, it chooses whether it can remove those gates if it chooses. That's between you and your HOA, the owners of that island area, and they're the ones that manage it. We can't, as my understanding was, when we review this, we can't enter in and force your HOA to take down those gates. So the situation is, you came to us with a safety concern, we immediately addressed the safety concern by doing a test with our largest apparatus, we videotaped that, I believe we showed that to you, was that the August 21st meeting? And so we wanted to be productive, and we had our solicitor do it, so that incurred taxpayer expense. We, there's not three votes, or I can ask Board members if there are, to incur additional professional services expense, when we don't have the legal authority to tell your HOA to change those gates. So they're approved. If you're unhappy with that, that's between you, really, and the HOA, not necessarily with the Township. I understand where you're coming at, from the concept that there is a difference between what was enacted in 2000 versus 2018, you in fact suggested that the 2018 standards, this would meet those. It's also important to remember, from a safety perspective, there are three entrances into Regency, only two are required by law. And also, too, that particular development, as we talked about previously, was subject to litigation, and so courts decided how that process went about, that predates all of us here on the Board. We have been very straightforward and helpful, I think, in assessing, you know, safety concerns. And so that you understand, this isn't the first time we've dealt with safety concerns at Regency. Many folks don't recall, and many newer members of Regency don't recall, that there was a serious mold issue that Toll Brothers, the builders of, and hopefully this is ruining their SEO or search engine optimization, refused to investigate. And it was a problem with many of the households within Regency, and it was a very unique kind of circumstance. The Township invested $30,000 of taxpayer money, working with an environmental engineer to solve that situation for you. So, we have been aggressive in dealing with safety issues. But, I don't think it's, and I wouldn't suggest to my fellow Board members, and I don't see them asking for this, I don't think that there's more expense that we should incur on something that we think is a difference of opinion between you and the HOA, and does not impact safety.
With all due respect, Chair Lewis, it's not between me and the HOA, it's between me and the Township for approving plans that were an obvious violation of codes and ordinances. And I understand you not wanting to incur costs, but for an engineer to determine whether or not the entrances and exits meet the requirements of the codes, he or she doesn't even have to get out of their car. They just have to drive, and they see, "Oh, guess what? There is an obstruction." And they can go get a cup of coffee and go to their office. So, I, the addition, I don't know whether you'd have to charge them thousands of dollars, or they would charge you thousands of dollars to do that. I, also, when you're referring to the letter from the solicitor to me, you know, with all due respect to Ms. Carlton, you know, she said there was a vigorous review done of the plans. A vigorous review? How vigorous could it have been if you can't get a fire truck in one of the entrances, which is what was determined?
Again, if you have a concern with this particular, there are two avenues that you have. First, you can work with your HOA, who has oversight and determinative action they can take on this. And second, if you feel that the court, when it approved the Regency process, right, if you feel that they made a mistake in that process, and they made a failure in there, I can get you in touch with the people that were part of that litigation, there are still a few of them living in Lower Makefield, and you are free to address that with the court. And it's not, it wasn't a typical land use decision, right? And that's why we're kind of, we're hamstrung in some ways. Listen, if this was something we approved and we screwed up, and God knows, all of us have been here a while, we make mistakes, we're not perfect, right? We would certainly look into that and see about making that right. Unfortunately, in this particular circumstance, we have done what we could, think is the maximum that we can do. Rendering a decision, if the engineer says, "Oh, this is safe," or "This meets all the code," that doesn't help you, right? And then the question is, do you want me to send it to the traffic engineer or the Township engineer?
You could send over whoever you'd like. In fact, if you'd like a professional engineer to do it free of charge, I am a licensed professional engineer, and I will send you a letter and tell you that those entrances and exits do not meet the codes in effect at the time of construction. And if the courts mandated that it's okay, then there's something wrong with the courts, because there should have been a variance listed on the plans, there should have been a variance listed. And we're talking about a safety, and a financial, and an insurability issue that can be corrected. And I'm just bringing that up, but I have another question I want to ask.
Okay, so, so let's address this first off. The Board is, and I'm looking around, I'm not seeing anybody telling me differently, is not interested in engaging more professional services to research this. Now, if you feel strongly about it and wanted to provide the funding for that, I could ask, but I don't think that that's likely to change their outlook on this. So, I, that's the answer, while it's not the one you would particularly like, it's the one that unfortunately is where we're at with respect to that. As it relates to the court decision, and I don't even remember the judge, I'd have to go back on that, I just remember the folks that worked on the case here, and the old solicitor. I'm more than willing to put you in touch with those folks, I have a respect for the rule of law, and I know that courts, just like any other organizations, can make mistakes, and it's very possible that there was something done process-wise that wasn't correct. However, the courts probably going to find the video that we showed that is public record of entrance, and they will have access to the letter and all those other things. So I think you might have some tough sliding on that, but I'm willing to get you, if you want to talk to some of the people who are part of that, I can go find them.
Chair, I would appreciate that. And I have another question, which is similar to this. As you may or may not know, the Regency at Yardley Development curbs curb ramps and crosswalks after a vigorous SALDO review for approval are not ADA compliant. And now, the ADA really applies to like public streets, sidewalks, et cetera, but if you take a look at the Lower Makefield Township ordinances, it specifically says that private developments will meet ADA requirements. So, since I brought that to the attention of the Township, and Toll Brothers, I assume they're doing the remediation work, they're actually doing some work to get the, to get this problem remediated. But, then I'm going to go back to the vigorous SALDO process, how did this design get through when it's a violation of somebody's civil rights? And I being a handicapped American citizen, my civil rights are being violated. How did that get through the SALDO process? And I know you're going to say you go back years, but I'm just bringing that up, because here you have a SALDO process that let an entrance where fire vehicles couldn't get in, get approved and installed. Now you have sidewalks, curb ramps, et cetera, that are non-ADA compliant. Those are two serious violations of Lower Makefield Township ordinances. So, I will just have, and continue, I'm just going to continue, then I'll sit down. Having gates and their associated islands at the Regency at Yardley Development obviously violates Township ordinances. I am vigorously pursuing, and I will continue to pursue this, because getting it resolved can only protect the residents of the Regency at Yardley, and ultimately, Lower Makefield Township, from safety, financial, and legal liabilities. And when we talk about going to the HOA, if we do anything with the gates, it's going to be at our expense. I am maintaining, it doesn't, it should not be at our expense, because they are there illegally. It would benefit both the Township and the residents of the Regency at Yardley if this could be resolved without having to resort to legal action, which will include filing complaints with the Pennsylvania Department of State against the professionals that approve this plan and are allowing it to continue. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who has public comment? With that, we'll close the public comment, and we're going to move on to Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda Items. And these are items that are grouped together. If any supervisor wants to remove one of the items for further discussion, they are free to do that at this time. If there's any member of the public who has a question about any of these items, they are free to ask about those. If you have any, you're free to walk up. If not, I'm not seeing anything from supervisors. With that, I would accept a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second. No need for discussion, I see. We'll call the question. All those in favor of the consent agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the consent agenda items passed with a vote of four to zero. We're on to Agenda Item 7. This is the Patterson Farm Master Plan Implementation Committee. This is a general project update and presentation of recommendations.
Good evening. I'm Joe Cameron, author of the Patterson Farm Implementation Committee, and I'm joined by Ron Shmid, also of the same committee. The committee was formed in February of 2024, and met for the first time in April. And we were tasked with moving forward with the eight initiatives that were identified in the Patterson Farm Master Plan as being Stage 1 initiatives. For a number of those initiatives, we've made sufficient progress in order to approve three recommendations to the Board of Supervisors at our September meeting. So what I'd like to do this evening is to review those three recommendations, answer any questions you may have on them, and then also give you just a quick update on one of the other initiatives, okay? So, the initiatives that are in focus here are, number one, to identify or establish a dedicated focused nonprofit to manage the property, and then also, to, number eight, to identify and prepare a few buildings that are early leasing opportunities. So, the committee did a fairly exhaustive search of speaking to a number of nonprofits in the region, and trying to ask them/convince them that they should come in to manage the Patterson Farm for us in terms of implementation of the master plan. And what we heard almost unanimously from all of those nonprofits was, this is too big of a project for us to take on. It would either go outside of our current mission, or exhaust our resources, and we were advised by mostly all the nonprofits to form a nonprofit that has the specific focus of managing, of preservation, preserving, and managing Patterson Farm. So our first recommendation that we approved reads, "The formation of a nonprofit for the improvement and property management of the Thomas Janney Homestead Historical Agricultural District." That name comes from work that the Historical Commission is doing on the National Register submission, and I can go into that in more detail, but it actually fits with the appropriate historical name for the farm, okay? So the recommendation is to form a nonprofit, and then also to have that nonprofit pursue 501(c)(3) status, so it can accept tax-exempt donations. The second recommendation actually begins to talk about the individual, if I can, the campuses, so the, what's called the Patterson or the Janney Farmstead, and then the Satterthwaite Farmstead. And we've had very productive conversations with Patterson Farm Preservation on, before I go in there, let me say, the master plan called for establishing the Satterthwaite Farmstead as an agricultural heritage center for Lower Makefield Township. And we've had very productive conversations with Patterson Farm Preservation on being the lead tenant there, in order to make that agricultural heritage center come to life. So the recommendation from the committee is to enter into preliminary lease discussions with Patterson Farm Preservation on select buildings on the Satterthwaite Farmstead, okay, towards the purpose of establishing an agricultural heritage center. The other campus, where the Patterson or Janney Farmstead, was dedicated, or was identified in the master plan to be Farmstead, okay, towards the purpose of establishing an agricultural heritage center. The other campus, where the Patterson Janney Farmstead, was dedicated, or was identified in the, um, in the master plan to be a arts center. And we already have a current tenant there in terms of A O I, Artistic Yardley, who would like to expand their presence on that Farmstead. So then the third recommendation is to enter into preliminary lease agreements with A O I Arts Center on select buildings on that Farmstead in order to bring, you know, not only bring that to life, but to expand the, the arts mission of that Farmstead. Okay? They were the three recommendations that the committee had approved for the Board of Supervisors. Obviously, with your approval, the township will be, will be able to work with township management on taking new, next steps in each of those areas. The other area that I just wanted to give you a quick update on, there was an initiative with regards to, um, paint and necessary light carpentry to protect and enhance as many buildings as practical. And township had put us in touch, they had identified a contractor for doing that painting, have put that contractor in touch with the committee, and we had vetted them to understand how they would handle the issue of the lead-based paint on the property, but also how they would handle the historic materials that are on the property. And we were satisfied with the responses that they gave, and they were open to some of the suggestions that we provided. We then went forth as a committee and prioritized which buildings should receive the first work by, by this, the first, the first case, first set of paints in this area. We have sent that over to the town for their, for their, um, bringing it into the budgeting process this year. So that's the update on that. So we've also made progress on that initiative. That's the end of my prepared comments, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, first of all, thank you for all the work you're doing as, you know, the liaison to the committee. I get to see firsthand, uh, the actions you take, the discussions you have, and all the good work that you do. And it's, it truly is good work.
Thank you.
And I know you know it's good work, because you're all, you know, putting in the time. Um, we do have your, just so you know, the last comment you had about, um, recommendations for painting, we do have that, and that's something that will be, you're at a budget meeting tonight, so it's, it's the first of a couple, I think. So that's definitely something that we have to consider as part of the budget process, as we consider everything else we're doing in the township. And then relative to your other, uh, recommendations, I think they're pretty straightforward, um, well thought out. Um, and, you know, there's devils in the details, as always, but I think getting moving, especially with the 501(c)(3) so that we can start funding is, is key. Uh, the other ones, we may have to trail a little bit to get some inputs about how we want to proceed, but I also think those are both great ideas, too. You just gotta, we gotta make sure we implement them correctly. So, I'll leave it at that, and thanks again.
Supervisor Blending?
The only thing I want to say is, you know, very much thank you. Our committees, like, leave me in awe sometimes with the work that they do. John started out talking about the cemetery, which, as you know, is not my thing. But I understand what a wonderful, um, project you've brought forth. And then what, you know, you've all done in helping us move forward with Patterson Farm. I really can't thank you enough for using, you know, those brains of yours and the hard work and all the people that you've been interviewing with, so that we can move forward on this. It means a great deal to everyone I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo everyone's remarks. We're very, very thankful for your work on that. Um, I wish, I was sort of hoping we could get started on the painting this fall, and I know, you know, it's better sometimes to be extra detail-oriented as it relates to historic preservation and also lead paint remediation. So I appreciate that, that all the folks dug in deep on that and got, uh, specific on it. And it was quite an eye-opener when we went through, Derek and I recently toured all of the, the properties. Some were not as, as bad as I thought, um, when I went in, because it's been years since I'd been in there. So, um, we look forward to looking at that. Again, the lease agreements is something we're, we're gonna have to work together with, and, um, anytime it's a public asset, we have to be extra careful in terms of how do we make sure that we protect the public asset for the public, but also make sure that, um, the participants are safe, too, as far as transitional stuff, and that there is a, a solid path forward. And I think what you guys have done, uh, and I use guys and gals, everybody on the committee, have done a tremendous job in building, um, the, I think, general support within the community, the infrastructure, and the broader plan that the Board of Supervisors I don't think could have done separate, uh, from your, uh, work, just in terms of the amount of time it takes and wrangling of folks. And so we deeply appreciate that, and I thank you. Um, so tonight, we're gonna be going through budget hearings, so you'll see, if you choose to stay, or if you want to go home and watch on, on TV, uh, we'll be discussing funding sources as well. And so I thank you so much, uh, for your time today. Look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight. Um, that's the 2025 budget. Um, and I'm gonna start from the outset. Our township manager is under the weather, but is joining us via Zoom. Uh, so he is, is there. Um, the first, um, lucky department will be our Community Development, uh, organization led by, uh, Mr. Jim Majewski. So we welcome you to, uh, budget season.
Good evening. And, you know, when I suggested that we move Community Development up, because it's in alphabetical order before the other departments, I didn't realize that I would be hit with this, so, oh, well. Um, I know you guys have the budget that had been circulated, the draft budget for first look at everything. Uh, the Community Development Department, we basically, uh, we've been having a decent year. Uh, revenues are a little bit off, and so are expenditures, uh, from what had been budgeted. Uh, for the average of the last five years or more, uh, we're right about in line with, uh, where we had been in prior years for revenues and expenditures. Uh, for the next year, we're looking to maintain that. Uh, there should be, uh, there's really almost no increase in the expenditures from last year to this year, or, sorry, to next year. Uh, for revenues, uh, we anticipate just a slight drop-off. Uh, it looks like the building boom that had been going on for the last, probably since 2019, has sort of leveled off. Uh, we don't have as many major, major projects going on. Uh, we are looking into some fee adjustments, uh, for next year's fees, to, uh, lower a few fees, raise a few here and there, to adjust it to be more in line with the level of service and level it up for required to maintain our building department. Uh, there are a few new items on the budget. Uh, one, we broke out a few items for education and training, dues and subscriptions. Those had been lumped into other categories in the past, but we broke those out just so we can get a better handle on how all that works. Uh, we also have, uh, engineering inspection fees. Uh, some of the fees we had had for reviewing sewer lateral inspections previously had been under the sewer department. Uh, now that, uh, we no longer have that, those fees are now incorporated into, uh, the Community Development Department as we review and process sewer lateral inspections for people who are moving out of their homes. Um, we also have another category for, uh, fees associated with, uh, the fats, oil, and grease program. That previously had been in another category, too. So, basically, there's not a lot of change. We look at our numbers, adjust a few up, a few down, as we see the trends are going. And, um, that's basically about all I have. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Uh, is there any, hm, pardon, supervisor questions? I'll start off, just because, excuse me, I apologize there. Um, a couple of things. We're showing a decline in contracted services, um, which is a good thing. And so I'll call that. What caused that from 83,000 to 60,000?
When we got our new permit software, there was a one-time charge to migrate all the information over into the new system. That has now gone away, so we basically save $23,000 based on that. Uh, plus, we eliminated a couple of other services that we had for stuff. So, that's where that comes about.
And then, and this might not be, excuse me, uh, appropriate for now, but certainly later, your assessment of the permitting system and Open Gov in terms of, um, my understanding is that's been a pretty solid winner for us, uh, in terms of client satisfaction or customer satisfaction, uh, and cost savings for the township. Are, are we at a point where we can say that, or are we still waiting for some data on that?
Oh, I think it's hands down a winner, uh, for not only us, the contractors, residents. Uh, it's a win in every way you could think about it. It far exceeded my expectations. Uh, we hit the ground running. Uh, there was very few issues with it up front, and they were easily resolvable. Uh, the only thing we have are some people just don't want to use a computer at all. Um, we often have them just come in, and we'll walk them through the whole process and sort of hold their hand as they go through it, especially if they're, you know, a homeowner. Contractors, we always tell them, you know, if you need help, maybe call your grandkids, and they could help you out with the computer. It's really not much different than, um, you know, the old paper system, instead of writing it all out and us typing it into, um, a format, the people type in their own information. Um, I, I've observed that probably the walk-in traffic of people with dropping off permits, having questions, picking up stuff, that's gone down. I'd say almost like 70%. And phone calls have dropped off dramatically, too. Um, response time has increased for the most part.
Decreased.
Decreased, sorry. Thank you. I don't know what I'm saying. Um, and, uh, I forgot my last thought. It wasn't very important, though.
Yeah, and the metric, excuse me, that, um, that I know many of us is, we were not getting calls about billing permits, and that's always a good sign, meaning that people are getting served quickly, and they don't feel any need to escalate at all. So I know that has been definitely a win. So one thing on inspection fees, we have an increase of about 60,000, and that is in, uh, Item, uh, 310? Can you explain that a little bit?
Uh, yes, that's the item that, uh, previously our sewer lateral inspection from our engineer had been in another category. And also, some of the engineering fees from our township engineer were categorized under general engineering. Uh, those that are involved with building permits, we want to have moved over into this category so that it accurately reflects the level of effort, and we can better track how our expenses and revenues related directly to a building permit are appropriate, apportioned.
Okay, so, and so that'll net out around the same as it was before then, so we're good, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's all I had.
Jimmy, you were talking about, um, reduction in development, so we possibly seeing less in revenue from, from that end. Uh, does, in 2025, does that contemplate, you know, we have a few big developments that we're hearing about, but haven't gone through the whole process yet, whether or not they're gonna be approved, in terms of, what do we have, Wright Farm, Torbert Farm? Hate saying farm after all these things, too. Um, probably some other ones that I'm not, I'm not saying, that I'm trying to think of. Does, does this revenue contemplate everything that's associated with those developments as well, or are they too far in the future, do you think?
Oh, no, it does contemplate, uh, some of that revenue. Uh, I know that, uh, if the developers continue to progress their projects forward, that they will be in a position to get an approval possibly, and get building permits towards the end of next year. So that is kind of thought that this would be coming forward in next year's budget. Also, we have the parking rec fee in lieu of, and traffic impact fee, tree bank fees, and, uh, those all contemplate a certain percentage of those developments moving forward. And we try to be conservative on that, so we don't sort of overstretch our bounds on that, and try to capture what we realistically think could come through, without being too aggressive.
And since we, I know we've talked about it, not necessarily in passing, but the zoning hearing board in here, um, about potential, we, I don't think we, we haven't passed an ordinance about it yet, but a potential fee for, uh, inspections related to, uh, variances that have been approved for, let's say, impervious surfaces, that where they need to install some BMP, and some, some type of fee that would be associated with inspecting that over time. That, those aren't contemplated yet, I assume. Is that correct?
Well, uh, part of the, uh, Category 310 engineering inspection fees contemplates, uh, some of that work.
Okay. Good.
That's it for me. Okay. Well, you know, we always, uh, we like fees. I'm not supposed to say that, right? Uh, but they help cover the costs and stuff, so if you, there are other ones you think need to be raised, that's fine. If there's ones that you think lowered, we'll look at those, too, but.
Well, I always try to look at, is there any fee that maybe is a little bit too high? And, you know, it just, uh, it's a good way to do business, to try to right-size everything.
Yeah, and I know, uh, it might have been seven or eight years ago when we first looked at some of the fees, where we were compared to our peers, and we were way low on some, and so that we've adjusted them to reflect the work output that, that you guys do, as it relates to when people ask for something, so that we're not subsidizing, uh, folks. So, uh, definitely appreciate that. Thank you. You got it out easy, Jim.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Good evening.
And we're moving on to, uh, fire services.
Hopefully, I'm as easy as Jim was, so, let's see.
Yeah, that, that jinxed you right there, man.
I know, I know. It's hard to follow. Um, so, good evening. Um, as Jim said, I'm sure you had time to look over the budget real quick. Um, the one thing that I want to talk about in the fu, uh, Fire Fund, um, that I'm proposing for next year, um, is a possibility of hiring a full-time firefighter slash code enforcement officer. Uh, this position can help, um, work out of my department, help with the inspections that are being conducted with the building permits, um, which I have done over 100 so far this year, which has been great. Um, but also, it takes time away from the office for myself. So he can help with that, special events permits, UNO inspections, so forth and so on. Um, also with this position, it'll actually help with the building code official who's, um, having a lot of issues and inspections. He has to go out on complaints. Um, with that, um, being he is younger, like myself, um, he is also willing to, if this position is hired, if some of the workload's taken off of him, he is willing to go get fire training to help out with the manpower shortages that is during the day. So, that would actually swing us, um, with a, another firefighter responding during the day if he's available. Um, with this position, also, um, this position can help with the manpower of the volunteers, with either driving the fire apparatus, riding the officer's seat, stuff like that, because as we know, with these statistics I've given you guys over the, the years, um, our manpower, especially during the day, is getting older, it's getting slimmer. We are recruiting volunteers, but their time during the day is limited. Um, and my two top drivers during the day are 78 and 81 years old. Um, and if it's not for them, it's either the chief, um, myself, or the other chief driving during the day, so it takes away from our other duties. So, um, this position can work out of the firehouse. Um, we don't have to provide a vehicle, there are vehicles over there that he can use, he or she. Um, but it is just a, a start. Um, it's something to help with the volunteer manpower, it's also to help out of my office, it also to help the building code official with, with his daily activities as he continues to get more and more workload on him with township growing and complaints and stuff like that. So, um, that was the one thing I wanted to touch on with the Fire Fund. Um, there's, um, I have a packet that I can forward everybody that explains every, um, account in there and stuff like that, but that was the major thing that I wanted to talk about tonight, so. Any questions?
So, I was gonna start, and maybe you could talk, uh, a little bit about, um, both some recent changes in state law, um, and then, um, for folks, I know this has been a long time issue, not just for Lower Makefield, but many communities in Bucks County, or probably most, um, is, so talk first a little bit about the changes in state law that gives the authority to increase millages for full-time police staff, and then also kind of, I think we're third in most calls in Bucks County year-to-date.
Uh, we're actually, this, we just got the statistics the other day, we're second right now. So, in the county. So, and we're on pace to hit almost 660 calls this year.
Wow.
So, we are up from last year. So, we are. And we haven't had any major And we haven't had any major, knock on wood, floods, storms, you know, hurricane and anything like that. So usually they inundate our call volume and we haven't had any knock on wood. Even with this, I know it's a sewer subject right now, but the lack of rain, um, we have not had many forests or woodland fires, which is good. Um, and hopefully it stays like that. But, um, yes, our, our call volume is going up, so.
The one question I think, just to kind of, I'm leading the witness here, but um if, just to say that folks need to understand how much we appreciate and rely on our volunteer service, uh, folks who are in the service of the community. Um, and we hope, we want to keep them and retain them, uh, even the folks that you mentioned a little older, I, I thought they were in good shape, so. Uh, they look strong to me. Um, but, um, I think over time, we're going to have to have some blended circumstance. Um, and so people need to understand that's likely to come over time. Uh, we want to make sure that those who have served know how much we appreciate them and that that transition is smooth. I know that's separate from the budgeting. I, I think there's, some members are going to certainly think about that, the additional position and in lieu of what we've talked about, that, that seems, there's good rationale for that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. And once again, with this position, if, if volunteers know that there is a, a driver at the firehouse during the day.
Yep.
It might entice them knowing that they're going to get out, you know, and, and help the community and stuff like that, like, you know, a guarantee almost, so. But.
Any other supervisor questions? And, and we're probably gonna go through, we may have questions for you later.
That's fine.
Did we get you, see, this wasn't that painful. Years past, oh my gosh.
I was quicker to Jim.
But in years past.
We're saving it all up for golf.
Oh. Yeah, oof. Holy cow.
Thank God it's F before G.
Yeah. So you got out just in the nick of time. Well, we used to have pizza years ago. So, we need to do that.
Budget cuts.
Budget cuts, yeah. Sorry.
That good. Did you see, you had something email, that you were gonna email us too, as, as sort of what I'll call backup to the?
Yes, yes. So I have a packet, I'll email you, explain everything. Also the hydrant fund, which nothing is changing in the hydrant fund.
Okay.
So I'll email you in both.
I saw a new fire hydrant going in, actually. I was thinking of you.
Yes, which is, which is helpful, yes.
He's not gonna send us a picture of that one. He's gonna send us the saddest looking fire hydrant in the world.
I, I updated the picture, so it's one of my brand-new ones, yes.
Let's see.
So, any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So. All right. And next up, batter up.
Counting threes.
Yep, the golf team comes up.
We need one more for our foursome. Go on to join us. Good evening, everyone. Just, uh, I'll start the overview if I could and then, you know, certainly field any questions. Um, hopefully this is fairly painless, um, as far as uh the budget side. Um, so, you know, this year, uh, again, another really strong year. Obviously, weather right now has been, as, as uh Tim just said, pretty dry, right? So, a lot of rounds of golf. Last year, we were, uh, we hit right around fifty thousand rounds of golf, fifty thousand three eighty to be exact. Um, we are tracking right there again this year, so we're gonna, we're gonna hit the numbers again. Twenty-two, we're at forty-seven, one eight six, so kind of see the trend still kind of moving, moving the right way, which is excellent. Um, F and B kind of does the same thing for us. Uh, you know, we were talking about F and B for a long time, uh, back in eighteen and nineteen. Um, and, you know, as we kind of got through COVID, uh, from that point on, it's just been, been pretty bonkers. Uh, we hit that eight forty-three number in twenty twenty-one. That was kind of our, our goal number back in, in nineteen before COVID. Uh, twenty-two, uh, nine sixty-nine, and we broke the million mark last year at a million uh forty-eight. And I think we're gonna probably be a million one, million one five this year, the way it's going. So banquet, à la carte, both are, are doing well, both are up. Uh, so just kind of, kind of cruising along, uh, as far as, you know, kind of, you know, what, what we thought was kind of the, the place to find revenue, we, we've managed to find some extra revenue there. So that's been positive. Um, the team's strong now, we got, uh, you know, good, good support in, in the kitchen side. Um, Mark's got back in, Mark Miller, who was our chef back in, uh, in nineteen, uh, came back this year, so happy about that. Great chef, and he's kind of, kind of tightening it all up and, and getting it back on, on track, so it's been great. Um, net income, I mean, without jumping to every page, I'll just kind of talk through net income. Um, you know, we're, again, we're tracking, uh, probably to, to reach that nine hundred thousand dollar number before any transfers, kind of what we bring to the table before we make any, any adjustments. Um, that's again up uh from prior year and uh twenty-five, yeah, again, we're looking at, trying to get into that nine hundred thousand dollar number again. So we see, I think the projections that were on here, just, just to be clear, were probably a little low because they were through August and the September, October we're having, you know, is, you know, pushing that number more forward. So if you want to run through any of the pages, I can kind of walk through any, just highlights for you real quickly. Um, the, uh, page one on, on net income, I would say really the only, the only difference we're gonna see is we have other G and A revenue that was bumped up and that was for credit card fees, because we're gonna try to capture credit card fees next year. We captured some this year. We made some policy this year, like the town has, to, to collect the, uh, the three percent uh credit card fee. We did that on our bigger events and banquets, if they use credit card, we gave them the option. Uh, so we captured some of that, but we think we can capture more of that going into next year as technology provides us that opportunity. Um, and then again, revenues, we're at four point one six nine in the, in the twenty-five budget, uh, projecting to be four million twenty-one, which may be a little light this year, we may actually come in a little heavier than that. So you can see the tran, the, you know, the revenues continue to kind of move in the right direction. As we go into golf course grounds, um, nothing, I mean, nothing really hard to speak about. Supplies, we're in that place twenty years and, you know, the garbage cans and the, the just a whole bunch of stuff just needs to be updated. Kevin's been working hard on trying to get quotes and get all the numbers together. So what was that number, Kev? About fifteen thousand, you thought? Just about, just about fifteen to kind of clean it all up and make it, you know, really presentable again. So we're gonna do that in the twenty-five budget. Um, the only other number that's really the, the, well, two numbers, uh, the sewer and water is kind of a, the big question mark for us, right? Um, right now, we're, we're hoping that we're gonna get our deduct back on the, uh, on the sewer charges, but water this year has been a, a super challenge. I mean, we have just got another water bill for about forty thousand dollars on top of the thirty-two thousand dollar one. That does not include the sewer charges, which were even more than that. So our water number is gonna be between eighty thousand, depending on what happens with the sewer, could be up to one hundred and eighty, one hundred and seventy, you know, depending on what they charge, charge for the sewer charges. So that's our big swing number. Um, and that's kind of the only difference you saw in twenty-three to twenty-four as well, as, as we kind of look, look at the projections. Um, equipment lease is going the other way, going in a positive direction. Um, so this year, all our leases fell off this year, so we have, uh, no leases, uh, to speak of. Um, we had the mowers that we discussed last year, they never came in, they're gonna come in now. So we're gonna get them, looks like November finally, just, just when we need them. Uh, and we'll have those mowers though, that, which is huge. We'll have the fairway units, uh, that'll come on lease. And then, as you know, on the agenda, we, we have some other items that we'd like to purchase because we've spent almost none of the leased money this year. So it gives us the opportunity to pick up some of those pieces that we need, keep our equipment lease kind of going forward. Next year, um, I'm still budgeting eighty-six, but I think we're, with the two pieces we're requesting the leases for this year, it'll be about seventy thousand. So we can look maybe at the end of the year if there's something we can do again, that would be, uh, a good opportunity. So we'll, we'll probably be low there. Um, and then just kind of running through, I think carts, pro shop, food and beverage expenses, there really wasn't anything, big changes. I don't know if you have any questions on any of those, but everything kind of just rolled through smoothly. Um, and then really, I think, you know, if, we'll take questions on the budget, we'd really like to speak about capital though, which is the most important thing. And, uh, we have a, we have some, uh, just maybe we could share this with them real quick, Kev, and we'll give that to them. But did you want to talk anything else on the operating budget before we talk capital?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Mike, real quick, you mentioned the sewer and the water.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm assuming, I'm understanding what you're saying, so sprinklers, any type of water system or irrigation that you're doing on the course, you're getting hit on the backend for the sewer processing part of that water?
Correct, yeah.
So is there like a separate meter?
Uh, there is, yeah. We have a, we have a, a meter at the road. When we turn on the water, we can see the difference between.
Thanks, sir.
You know, what we're putting in the pond versus what we're spending for the clubhouse, so.
Sure.
You know, our normal few thousand dollars kind of number.
But that gets, so that gets separated, you're not getting, you're not getting hit.
We are though, they're not, they did not put us on the deduct, so somewhere along the line, when they're, we're doing the changeover from when, during the purchase, somehow we got missed in that. So I know Derek's been working on it, we've, we've talked to them several times, uh, we're hopeful that, you know, that'll get.
Are they, are they pushing back on that, or is, I mean?
Derek, I don't know if you've got any.
Yeah, Brad started.
Maybe you could, you could expand on that.
Yeah, I was just gonna call Derek out. Derek's primarily been working on that issue, so perhaps he can speak to that.
Thanks for pulling me up.
Thanks for being here.
Well, while you're there, Derek, we're also gonna talk about pond liners, so don't, don't be going anywhere.
The, uh, just like a lot of things with the sewer sale, um, the deduct meters at the golf course were not necessarily clean in the sense for P U C standpoint. So obviously the township didn't keep records of ourselves, we didn't charge ourselves sewer, so we never really kept records of having a quote-unquote deduct meter up there. And the meters weren't necessarily installed in a deduct fashion. They're almost inverted deduct meter. We have a meter that comes in from the street that P A American Water charges water for, and then we have two separate private meters that measure domestic water into the buildings. The delta between those two is what goes into the pond when they fill the irrigation ponds up. Aqua never knew about that during the purchase, because we never had records of those meters, because we never charged ourselves, we just paid what P U S, P A American Water charges for water. Um, so going through that process, Amer- Aqua is understanding, they're trying to figure out how to accept that right now and at least credit us money for the twenty twenty-four season. Uh, they were out there, they viewed the meters, they're somewhat in agreement, but again, it's not a hundred percent kosher of how the meters are set up. So they may be willing to accept them this year as a deduct. Moving forward, they may want to see a whole entire different metering system out there because it's not done the proper way in terms of a traditional deduct system.
But there is an opportunity for us to install the proper deduct systems and be able to account for.
As of right now, they're, they're understanding it, it's pretty much at the president level at Aqua P A to, and they're on their, they're figuring out how to do that. But yes, they're, they're willing to understand. They can see clearly that we're using one point two million gallons of water, was, is not going down the sewer. And at two cents a gallon for the sewer rate right now, I mean, the one sewer bill was sixty-eight thousand dollars, the water bill was only forty-two thousand. So the sewer bills are higher than the water bills out there.
Sure.
Yeah. Because water, water, as we use more water, water rate goes down. Sewer for commercial service is flat two cents per gallon, no matter what you use.
But we're currently paying, we're paying this as it stands, right?
We, we paid the one bill, or no, we did.
No, we have not paid it yet.
And they were fine with that. They, they're, they're understanding, they're just trying to figure out how to work it out on their backside.
So I mean, in the interim, can we not pay that bill until we figure out what it is? Because I'd rather, I'd rather us hold that money.
We did not, yeah, we did not.
Okay.
Yeah, correct. And we still have costs, but they're, they're understanding until we figure this mess out.
Sure. I'd rather them figure it out and tell us what the bill is rather than us pay it.
And they, and they agree. And they're, they're understanding.
We've been paying the difference just for what would be the normal water, uh, sewer charges.
Cool. That was all I had, thank you.
Okay. Um, so obviously that brings us to the capital, which.
Mike, before, can I ask?
Yes.
One quick question on, on your revenues?
Yeah.
Just looking at and making sure I'm seeing the column headings correctly here. So I'm just looking at twenty-four projected versus twenty-five budget generally. And when I look at F and B, as we call it, food and beverage, for those listening at home, when I, when I look at food and beverage non-banquet, gen, correct me if I misspeak here, generally speaking, it looks like it's gonna be across the different categories that would be included in food and be, food and beverage here with beer liquor, wine, et cetera. Um, relatively similar or flat from twenty-four to twenty-five? Is that fair? Plus or minus a couple thousand dollars here and there?
We did, we did keep that side a little bit flat. I mean, it was obviously our best year this year.
Well, that's, yeah, right.
Um, and our goal obviously is to continue to grow some of the banquet, which then does offset à la carte at times. So we have to kind of manage between the two, because, uh, if some of the banquets are indoors, then there's some loss of à la carte, so this is a little bit of balancing act.
I guess you, just thinking that way, do you feel, you know, this was your best year ever, or close to it, whatever it was, do you feel like you've hit your, your upper limit for what you could, the revenue can produce there?
No, I think that's part of this conversation on the capital, because having, like, the, you know, talking about the, the deck and covering the deck and having a, you know, more of a, another outlet for events and or à la carte, kind of gives us that space.
So in your current setup, do you think you've come close to your upper limit, but you would need these improvements to?
Yes, yeah, I think we're kind of in that place, we gotta think about.
Okay.
Um, you know, the offset between the two, right? So, I mean, we're doing a lot of, a lot of rounds of golf, a lot of golfers are eating, we're doing some additional à la carte just off the street, and to continue to grow that, we need more of a bar, more of a, a deck, I think, to, to have that opportunity.
And that's where you're about to talk about.
Yeah, that's what we're about to talk about.
All right, and we'll hear all about the additional revenue that's gonna produce, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so, you know, the key items on the capital, you know, and, and again, this list has been growing over the years. So we know there's not been a, a big, uh, push to recapitalize the golf course as we're kind of figuring out the debt over those years. Um, since the sewer sale, the payment, uh, pay off the debt, I mean, we still know that that net number is always gonna be, you know, it, it seems to be minimum of in the seven fifty range, up to a million, what we can produce, uh, before paying any other, uh, transfers back to the, to the general fund. So that number, you know, gives us plenty of money in our minds to try to achieve, uh, tackling these items here. And, you know, to look at this, we kind of ran the numbers more as, as thinking debt service, could we, could we take out a loan for somewhere between one point nine and, and two point seven million, take out that loan, have that money available to us, and then be able to start tackling all these items, because the list is getting long. So instead of trying to piecemeal this year after year after year and try to tackle one at a time, you know, I think we have an opportunity to kind of do something which we can more than cover in, in, in the operation to pay for the debt service, get us through these items, because five to ten years, we have irrigation, we have other building needs, there's gonna be more need. So it's just, we gotta look at this and know it's always gonna have a, an important piece of, the capital's an important piece to continue to, to maintain what we're doing and grow what we're doing. So in our minds, looking at the list, the priorities, obviously the ponds, we've talked endlessly about, but, you know, we tackle the pond, that could cover the debt service on, on all this other stuff too, you know? Because if we're spending a hundred thousand dollars a year on water, a year like this, I think we're probably gonna be eighty thousand dollars just on the water bill. So take that water bill.
I, Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I, just to put some perspective on, on some of this, so, and again, there's, there's more discussion to be had here, but, um, the, we did have somebody run, uh, debt service numbers on, uh, approximate, on a, on a one point five million dollar borrowing, uh, using a, a twenty-year level debt service payback. That, that number was about 127,000 annually, both principal and interest, in terms of what would be due, due on that. To sort of get to what Mike is, is talking about, um, we looked at not even this, these additional bills, but, but just what was paid over a 65-day period, I think, for sewer and water charges. Uh, and I think Derek, you, you had provided that information. I think we were at 121,000. So to, to Mike's point, you know, addressing, now again, there, there's still this, this discussion regarding the deduct meter and, and, you know, potential credit of some of that money back. But you, you could almost, you could almost pay debt service for a, a fairly significant borrowing just, just by avoiding costs associated with the water and sewer charges that are currently being.
I have a quick question around that actually. So the, what you're saying is those ponds at, at, at seven and nine would be your water source?
Yes.
For the course. If you have long periods of drought, do you still have to refill those ponds with, with, with water?
We're constantly filling, but we have wells that we fill them with.
Okay.
It's just, we're losing, they're losing water faster than we can replenish.
Sure. So you have onsite wells that are?
Yes, we have two onsite wells that we run. It's just they can't keep up with the loss of water.
Is there any, those wells ever gone dry? Have you had, like even during drought time?
Service to them over the years, re, put a new pump in. We, we did some water fracking, they call it, where they actually just kinda clear a lot of it. And that helped quite a bit uh, a few years ago, just to get the, the gallons per minute up again.
So you think if you, if we did the pond liners at seven and nine, we could essentially get off of the Aqua water intake?
Yeah, I think so. I think.
So I mean, that alone.
Seven and nine done alone kinda pays for, sorry, pays for, you know, covers those costs, absolutely.
Okay.
So those, those ponds, they're specifically used for, you, you, you have a liner in them, right? And then you collect the water and, and obviously the liner isn't working and you're losing water.
Has deteriorated many years ago.
Yeah, so.
It's just getting worse.
Yeah, the liner, the liner is original to the construction of course. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I, I appreciate that.
So you have an understanding that's 20, 20 years old, a liner?
So the, a liner, uh, liners don't last that long. Um, so my, in years past life, doing some of the design on this stuff, we always did wet, integrated that into our stormwater management system and did wet detention ponds. And then you'd have standing water in a pond that also served as stormwater management. Then you could use that as sort of gray water for, um, for irrigation, et cetera. Do we have anything akin to that at, so are these ponds, are not stormwater ponds?
I mean, if, if it rains.
If, well, yeah.
If it rains, uh, they capture a lot of the water runoff.
Front nine and was drained too and was the front nine.
Yeah, they're, they have drains in them. So all the drains on the golf course where they can be do push to there.
Are, are, you know what I'm gonna ask. Are they, in the land, such, placed in the landscape such that it's going to naturally flow there? Or are they just collecting water that comes immediately near them?
They're probably in the higher terrain of the course, unfortunately. But I mean, they, they do capture a pretty good amount of stormwater, I would say.
Yeah, so a portion of the golf course. You know, the, the, the back nine obviously is lower and down in the, kinda down in the valley there a little bit.
I'm just, and I haven't looked at them at all. I have no idea. I'm wondering if there any opportunity to retrofit them as a wet detention basin? So that the need for a liner is reduced, so that we always have a source of water.
I think the geography of the rock there is, it's all fractured shale. So you, you need the liner, you need the liner system. So, and that's the problem is the liner probably was a, in my opinion, probably a cheaper liner when it was constructed. Probably only had a 10-year lifespan. It wasn't covered. There was no cover soil on it. So it was just exposed, the whole top, what, seven feet was exposed to UV for the last 20 years. So it's, it's gone. Yeah. There's, but there's probably only about five feet of water in them when really they're probably designed the whole, I think 12, 10 to 12 at least, yeah.
If we, obviously you're gonna, when you wanna put liner and you'd probably drain them, right? Then fix it, put some, what, what are we looking at? This might be an opportunity to make it that much better, maybe do some, well, now they call it green infrastructure around the edge of the ponds uh, to make, you know, in the literal zones on the, you know, shallow portions and then on the banks of the pond, stuff like that. Make it look nice, add some habitat and stormwater, additional stormwater management to a pond for relatively little money when, when you do that. So that, I think if we have to do something like this, if we don't have, if we're not creating new ponds somewhere else, uh, I think that's something we should look at. Cause that could have a good improvement.
That could all be incorporated into the RFP at that point and try to look at all those angles for sure.
Tall grasses, some of the balls that would normally roll into the pond might get stopped by the tall grasses.
Yeah. And that actually filters the water at the same time. So two bird, well, no, two fur, not two birds. Yeah.
All I ask is when you drain seven and nine, just give me all those Pro V's that I've lost.
A lot of them there, they all do.
So on the line, we could do some stuff around the pond to increase capabilities. I guess you said it's, it's fractured shale. So we couldn't go deeper to?
No, from what I understand when they constructed it, they're actually not as deep as intended 'cause it hit so much rock. Probably from what I understand.
Yeah, from what I, yeah, from all the years talking with golf committee and the folks that were here when it happened, um, yeah, they're not even as big as they wanted to make them 'cause they hit so much rock. So they're, they're a little limited to when they started, really.
Do we know if there's any other locations at the course that would be better suited, like would be well suited to support a wet, a wet detention basin?
And to get it to the pond for irrigation, um, yeah, I don't.
If it's all the same type, I, I have no idea what the geology.
Yeah, I wouldn't think there would be an opportunity there. So I guess with that, you know, just kinda going through the list, um, these are all the things we've talked about. We talked about this at the last budget meeting. Um, again, the range covers, the range field itself. Prime range continues to, you know, increase in, in revenue. It's doing well. So, uh, but that field is just, it, it's dire out there. I mean, it is, we're, we're down to all the shale. There's no more topsoil. We've run that cart over that field so many times. It's just, so it really does need to be, to be dealt with. Um, we've talked about the bar renovation. You know, we definitely have to do something at minimum this year. I have to do something because some of the plumbing in there is just at a point where, you know, we can't, we can't meet the standards even for border health. We gotta make sure we, we, we are meeting that, those standards.
Does, sorry Mike, does that include anything with the kitchen? Or is that just the bar, uh, outside the kitchen?
This was a bar renovation, you know, again, if you get to that 175,000 dollar number, we potentially could, could increase the size of the kitchen a little bit, move the bar out and slide it all out. It's, it's kind of that, that capturing the banquets versus à la carte business again. It'll make us a better à la carte space inside. Um, and we'll have to focus all our efforts on out, on the banquets for the larger ones outside and do the small banquets inside, which works pretty well. Again, the deck piece is a huge opportunity because if we can continue to à la carte in there, if we're using the inside space for a banquet, then we never, we never really have to slow down or kinda put the brakes on the à la carte. Um, and then just going through, so carp paths are just another, one of these items that just have to get done, right? It's like our roads. They only last so long. They're 20 years old at this point. You know, you drive down the carp paths and every 20 feet you hit a, you hit a rut basically because, you know, they, expanding joints are at a point where, you know, they're just in really rough shape. So again, the, the presentation of the golf course, the experience we're trying to provide, golf cart paths make it really, really hard. Uh, cause you're, you're getting, you know, you get a little banged around up there. So, um, and then the walk-in, the walk-in's original and just needs to get done. Uh, and bunkers in there, we have been piecemealing the bunkers, as you know. The, we've got through just about all the, uh, the greenside bunkers. We're gonna tackle a few this, this, uh, fall right now. But the balance of them is probably about a 250,000 dollar number. And again, if, if we could just do this in a different manner and just have that available to us, we can, we can tackle all that at once, you know, so. And get a contract in there and just get it done kinda thing. So again, the golf course will be that much better. And we have an opportunity with the 18th hole, we think, to really improve that hole. It's been kinda the one hole that, you know, everybody kinda like, you get there and it's like, it's really a hard funky tee shot. And it kinda, you can't hit driver, you can't really play it like you really think you should. And moving the tee back would kinda create that opportunity for us. So we've, we've, um, identified what we think would be a really great location for a tee box. And we could change that hole up a little bit.
Just move up a little bit towards Mike?
I'm sorry. Yeah, we can, uh, we really improve that hole, we think, with the movement of the tee box. We would make 16 a par four, which is a short five, make 18 a, a par five instead of a par four. So it would change it up a bit and make it, uh, I think a little more exciting finish for everybody on, on the golf course.
Supervisor McCartney's concerned that might impact his game.
18 is unbelievably challenging.
Yeah.
I mean, for what it is, but yeah, that's.
Yeah. So that, that's kinda where we are. And, you know, obviously we, we would, uh, we would, you know, I can't stress enough the importance of getting these things done. And, you know, I think the mechanism really to do that right now would be create that debt service. Let us kinda, you know, put a loan out there. We don't need to spend it all at once. We spend it as it comes. And we just keep knocking these things off the list.
So my concern on this, um, is one, some of these items have a quicker payback than others. So like the pond liner, I think we know that that has a payback and there's benefits there. Some of these other ones, the payout isn't as certain. And, um, and then the, the other concern, I'd like to know kind of if you have an idea what you think the payout would be on an annual basis or cost save, uh, for each of these. We have a rough idea that investing in the pond liner pays for itself in five years or seven years, whatever that is.
Yes.
And then, uh, which of these in rank order would you wanna do first? I think the pond liner.
Ponds, yes.
Right, is, is number one. But then knowing.
The range and the range field, just they were kinda on the list, the covers this year.
Right.
And, you know, just trying to work through that, uh, with the contractors and getting that buttoned up is gonna push it into 25. So that's already on the list and ready to go. Uh, again, the bar to me is, and the deck, you wanna try to do that. I don't know, you know, at this point, we may be able to get that, the bar done in, in, uh, in the off season. The deck, I think is gonna take some engineering, some time to kinda get that to a point, ready?
The one concern I have, and this is general, cause I've been, we've been doing this for a while now, is when we try and tackle too many projects too quickly, uh, we're not effective in getting them done on time, on budget, on scope. And, um, this is a lot here for us to manage in that process. Um, so if we can chunk this, and I'm not necessarily in terms of timing, if you say, hey, these are our top priorities, one, two, and three.
Yeah.
We wanna tackle these this month, that month of 2025. These might slip into 2026, 2027. I know I'm not allowed to say that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Totally agree.
And then in terms of the financing element, obviously, uh, Dave is under the weather, but if, there are other options that we might choose that are shorter duration loans, um, and also a line of credit, depending on where things are with bank rates. Cause I, I'm hopeful that we're gonna go through a period of rate reductions, um, shortly, which would make this a little less painful in terms of cost, uh, and, and closer to us getting to where we need to be. So if we could get some more detail on that, that would be helpful.
Appreciate having the opportunity to kinda lay this out for you. And we're happy to come back and provide you with more detail on it.
And like, sorry, in, in reality, it's almost like one, it, it, most of that stuff can't even happen in 2025. You know, like the pond liners, even if we wanted to say, go here's 800,000, it's gonna most likely couldn't even start till fall of 2025. So it's a fall of 20, just from operations. Same with the carp path paving, you know, maybe, just the way that has to happen so it doesn't disrupt ops. So it's almost like a one to three year plan probably to implement all that stuff, give or take.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I would agree 100%.
And, and the goal is to hit that one to three stuff. Cause in five to 10, you're gonna have, buildings are 30 years old, you need roofs, you need, yeah, you need all that stuff.
I just think, I think the opportunity right now is to trigger the opportunity to start the process, right? And then we can put the bid together for the pond liners, put the bid together for the carpet, get the bids out and get the engineering done on the deck. So all of these things can happen and be ready to go as, you know, and schedule them accordingly.
So one of the things, I didn't see a specific capital budget request number for expense with it and on there. So.
Right.
There's probably, given where we're at in the project, it's not gonna be that heavy a hit on 2025.
No, no. I don't think it would be a, a very heavy hit this year. I mean, we could, you know, to me, the bar and the walk-in would probably be the easiest thing to knock off the list. Um, range covers will hopefully happen this year in 25. So I think those three would be a definite. Um, bunkers could be the fall of 25. Pond liner maybe starts in 25 or towards the end.
Has to start. Pond liner has to start.
I agree. I agree.
So we have to do everything that we need to do to make that start.
Yeah. I mean, now's the time to really get, get, get after it right now. So, yeah.
So, so a follow-up question to that, and Derek, you started to hit on it, right? This is, this is what needed to be done yesterday. I'd like to see what, a plan, and I'm taking something from Dan, you know, what about, what else is coming due? Right? I heard we got new garbage cans, woo-hoo, yay. But there's gotta be other, um, pieces, as you've mentioned, that, you know, course is 20 years old. So this is what we know is in pretty, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think our, our thought is if we could tackle all of this and, you know, in that one to three range, make the payments back.
So there's nothing else coming?
Irrigation's gonna be the big one.
I wanna be very specific.
Yeah, irrigation 30 years is usually kinda the number.
There we go.
Uh, which is a big number. It's gonna be, you know, a million and a half, two million probably for that number. So, you know, if we can knock this out and then be prepared for that, that's to me.
But that's the kinda stuff that I wanna hear about as we, as we look to this. Cause I think, well, I'll just speak for me. I, I, my year with you, you know, I understand the need for this, you know, a lot of these things. And so, you know, I'm good. But what I wanna have the board understand and the community understand is what else is coming.
Sure, yeah. And, and again, I think what we just said, Derek and I, the irrigation and building pieces are gonna come into play, you know, roofs.
A little more formal, but yes, you're, you're, you're hearing what I need. Thank you.
To build off of that point, I think it's a good and important one. If we start talking about things like additional roofing uh, for the building or improvements to the building that would change its footprint, if you think those are coming in a five-year time period, does that, how would you plan accordingly? Do you do the same stuff with the deck and bar renovation, for example? Right? So is there an option for you to say, this is what I think the building could be five years from now? And this is the way I'm gonna build the bar renovation to fix that? Uh, cause back there, there's a, I was back in the kitchen and, and the bar. And the equipment is there. It's just not in a, operationally could use a little fixing, right? And there's not enough space.
Right.
Uh, but if you think five years from now, if you're gonna come back and say, hey, listen, I really wanna blow out the back end and make it much, much larger, the building, well, then we have to think about, okay, did we, how much of the money that we'd spend here is not being spent as wisely as possible?
Sure.
So, oh, yeah. I, huh? Yeah. The, part of me is like, uh, if you think that five years from now, right, that you're gonna be asking for additional building stuff, then I think you might wanna spend some of the time planning for what that's gonna be and rethinking stuff that's to that building. Possibly. I don't know for certain, Derek, it's something you'd wanna think about and talk through.
And I think Mike's point was maybe not five years, blow it out. I think five years is just, you're gonna need roof siding. I mean, that, I think that was the intent is, is just building maintenance is due.
Just the upkeep on the building. Right. Again, remember it's 20 years, 30-year roofs. You know, you're gonna start thinking about roofs, you're gonna start thinking about siding. We've done some work over, over the years to, to, uh, take care of some of the problem areas. So it's in pretty good shape right now. But, you know, windows, we're gonna start failing, you know?
Well, from a, for the, I'm still focusing on the pond liners, cause that's important and it's a big number. Trying to think outside the tee box here. Um, pardon, bad pun. The, I gave it to you.
Late.
Did land studies, look at the golf course in their stormwater management watershed review? Cause it's right there. It's right on the edge.
Off the top of my head, I believe it is on, it, it's not part of that tributary that we directed. And so I think Woodside Road is the break point. I think, I think, uh, golf course drains down to that little stream in the back that goes down to Taylor Field.
Drains down, it'll hit into 18 and make its way down the golf course to the.
Cause that, you get significant drainage coming off a golf course, even though it's grass, it's very compact, compacted soils and grass. So, um, I'm wondering if there's a way to leverage some of those studies and some of the funding that we might be able to come out of those studies that would improve drainers there, stormwater management downstream in a more holistic approach, yada, yada, yada. That might make it a little bit easier to fund something like this, but still have a positive, a net positive benefit.
Yeah, no, I, um, absolutely. I think the, the intent though is, is the ponds at five and nine, just the way the operations are, all water needs to go at five, right? All, all the water needs to go to pond at five. At nine, I'm sorry, nine. That's where the irrigation, irrigation suck is. Whether we add other ponds or, or detention basins somewhere else, we still gotta, we still gotta do a liner there because that's where all the irrigation.
I hear you. And maybe the long-term plan, we might be, again, I'm throwing out, there may be other opportunities to add more ponds or something else. When you up, upgrade the irrigation system and however many years you gotta do it, see if that might be something you could do. Gray water, all that stuff. So you're not paying for even less water, hopefully.
I like, we're all about gray water if it's available, yeah.
Quick question, you might know the answer to this. How many general fund repayments do we have that are getting, going back? I couldn't find it on that spec sheet. So how many of those?
The dollars?
Yeah.
So we did, Brian, what's the?
Because I thought it was four years at like.
Four fifty-five.
Four fifty-five?
Each year, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, worst case scenario, instead of paying ourselves back, we could just use that money for capital, right? I mean, are you going to take debt out? It doesn't make, if you have that.
Right, but you're still, you're incurring the costs for the taxpayers on that. So it's a trade-off, right?
But it's already been incurred. I mean, this was, it's already in, it's, it's been paid in years past. It's already, it's out there, right?
Yeah.
So you mean, you're, you're playing with house money essentially.
Yeah, I mean, the, I think the conversation of, you know, what the golf course has paid over the last 20 years and what the debt service was has always been a moving target, right? I mean, we know, we know the golf course has annually repaid debt in the neighborhood of $700,000 to $800,000 a year. So that's what we make every, every year and that's what it's paid. How that number then gets applied against the, the debt of the golf course is.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have an answer.
I mean, how many payments do we, how many payments do we have left? We have two more years of those repayments, is that correct?
From the original plan?
I believe that is correct, James.
Yeah, from the original plan.
That, that was actually for, I guess, a period of subsidy that was, was occurring. So that, that was right, that was a limited duration thing. But I, I do think that, my understanding is the township's intent was to continue to have that revenue stream pushed back out of the golf courses.
Well, I mean, until you come to a point where the, the, the asset that's providing that income stream needs capital improvements.
Right.
Right? So you're not going to, you're not going to deteriorate that asset to the point where it's no longer producing income. Because you're not paying attention to the capital piece of it. So if in two years, you're saying that we're going to free up close to $900,000 worth of revenue that was being kicked back to the township, why wouldn't we use that money at least? And why are we taking debt out? Why are we, why, if we have that revenue stream and we have a capital need at the asset, why are we pulling debt out to, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I understand part of what you're going for. We also have other sources of cash that we could borrow against with an inter-fund thing. So if your concern is going to a bank or something like that, the bank loan would give us some flexibility, although the rates are slightly higher than, than we would like right now, and I think they'll come down over time. But those are all trade-offs. The thing is, if you take the money out of the general fund, then we've got to fill the general fund gap, which is, as you've talked about in the past, is an issue for us and, you know, we have to, to raise a millage to cover that. So you're not, I guess, some of your point around finding a way not to pay a very high interest rate, I think you all agree with.
I'm confused about this because the millage has already been paid, right? So the, the money that was being subsidized in the golf course was on prior millage for prior tax years, right? So what you're saying is if I withdraw that money going into the general fund, now I'm going to have a shortage?
Yeah, because it's budget that we were going to be getting that into the general fund. That was part of the discussion at the time.
So we're building our business based on the golf course giving us $450,000 a year?
That was part of the premise, remember the.
Well, no, 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 to repay prior debt, not to go, not going forward.
Right, but general funds shouldn't be subsidizing service elements like this because you're having taxpayers subsidize the golf course.
But the golf course shouldn't subsidize general fund if our budget's off, right? So like, if our expenditures are, if our expenditures are over what our budget is from a general operating fund based on millage, why am I using the golf course to increase my, my income to now balance my general fund? That doesn't make sense.
Well, the folks who thought of the golf course predates all of us here. Their premise was the golf course would generate a lot of money and that that would cover costs in general fund and they wouldn't have to raise taxes. Their premise was that. Where it got slightly astray was in 2013 with the Dagowitz settlement. The township got nicked for a $5 million settlement. It's because the township used eminent domain to take the property. So if we go back in history, that wasn't a really good idea. None of us were there, so, you know, we don't know all the decision-making around that. That's when you have the initial debt and then that settlement, you had created a situation where the debt was still there, it was a large portion. We would have been paying that off in about five years, like as the way we're going, before that sewer sale. So that would have been resolved, but again, these situations would have presented themselves because we were taking so much to pay that, that debt service that kept getting moved, right? So we were rolling that over. And so that the situation that, that predates the sewer sale, but between this series was that we were taking money from the general fund to subsidize the golf course. And that was wrong, right? It can go the other way, no offense, guys.
By the way, we, we do that for the pool too.
To a much lesser degree and not.
Do it, but we do it regardless, right?
But that one uses, still don't want to, that one uses parks and rec funding, which is different than the general fund. The general fund's the one technically we're most constrained on, which is why, you know, if you said, hey, I'd rather pay for this sooner. Can we have a golf millage? Sure, no problem, right? Or temporary something, I wouldn't have a problem with that. So there, I'm just, and I hear you on the, the debt question, there's a lot of options. I don't think any of us have a preconceived answer to that. And I think that the suggestion of making it a 20-year loan was, I could be persuaded on that. I'm open to that. I'm, you know, it really kind of depends on where we are rate-wise.
But it's like taking a loan, have to pay your, to your.
I think this is a, a great discussion, probably one that we want to not continue to have right now.
Sure.
But, you know, there, there's like a little bit of a weird dialogue, in my opinion, right? Because I, I talk a lot about how we got the golf course, more, more than might make any sense. But my, my opinion right now, right, you know, right, right now, so when I change it in two minutes, don't quote me, is that if we didn't do, if the board, if the township hadn't done, if they hadn't done eminent domain, we would not have the golf course. And that's a, almost a true statement if we're going to go try to buy some large piece of land because we can only pay the appraised value and builders can pay whatever they want. So if we're going to compete for land, we're at a disadvantage. So the prior boards got the land, they went about it the wrong way, the court said so, township had to pay it back. When does it stop? Because if the idea of the board 20 more years ago was that we'll have a golf course and then we won't have to raise taxes, I think that experiment has failed. And we do need to invest in the golf course so that it can continue to be profitable and pay us something back rather than nothing because it has become a dust bowl and nobody wants to play it, right? So we have to find that balance. We promised to be a short meeting tonight, so I stop.
If I may, if I may, just, just to, just quickly.
I'm sorry, Mike, if I could just.
Go, please, go ahead, David.
And again, I apologize that I'm not there and I'm sorry for not being. James, just to answer your question, so 2025 is the last year in which the repayment of the subsidy is contemplated. So the final $455,000 payment was contemplated to, this subsidy was expected to be repaid at, at the end of 2025. That being said, again, I, I think they're, my understanding, and again, I wasn't here, is that, you know, the golf course was going to continue to push some of that net income that, that Mike is speaking about back to support other township-related functions.
Yes, I mean, some of it, at 450 almost equates to about a mil, is that correct or?
Yeah, little, little, little bit, little bit less, yes.
Yeah.
Like 553 at 100% collection is, is about a mil, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and, and just for clarity, my understanding was that, that wasn't going to be the case. My understanding was going to, that we were going to repay the general fund for what we had taken over the years of shortages at the golf course. And moving forward, the golf course was going to be profitable and was going to be able to accept the challenges of the capitals issues that they, that they were going to have coming up. So I, I don't know where the disconnect there, because to me, that makes sense. I mean, that's the, if you have an asset that's performing, you're going to want to make sure that that asset continues performing. And like Suzanne's point, you're not going to want to just drive it into the ground, so.
Correct.
So right now, and, and again, the, the only reason I'm, I'm saying that it is, back in, I think it would have been in, as part of your 2023 budget process, you guys established what was called the golf bond repayment fund. And it was a, it was a nominal contribution that was coming back from the golf fund to this golf bond repayment fund. As I understand it, that was intended to essentially over time recapture sanitary sewer sale proceeds that were used to pay off debt that was still being attributed to the golf course at the time in which the system was, was monetized and sold. And so while the subsidy was no longer necessary, you would essentially, you, you, that, that number, that 455 number would essentially go to this golf bond repayment fund, which again, would, would be sort of the amortized, amortized contribution back to the township for the use of those sanitary sewer sale proceeds to pay off debt. Now again, as Mike's saying, there's, there's a, you know, from his perspective, the golf course was paying 7800, $700,000 to $800,000 of debt service. And yet at, in 2023, it was still showing $15 million of outstanding debt. So I, I don't know all the history there and there's, there's probably a rationale behind that. But, but that I, is what I understood, sort of coming in based on prior conversations that I've had with folks that, that were involved in that decision-making process. That doesn't mean it needs to stay that way, that I'm just expressing is just what was expressed to me.
Yeah, and to, to Dave's point, I think the, the real question, it, it's just the way the debt service was structured is the question, right? Is you're going to either look at this as its own revenue fund, it's its own fund and it pays its own bills. Or in the beginning, it was rolled into, I think, a lot of the other bonds and issuances that occurred. So it's really hard to see a straight line of what the golf course really paid versus what it didn't pay. But I think if you just took a 20-year note on a, on a $15 million property, you would pay that off with a $700,000 payment per year. So if you looked at it just on a straight line, the golf course has paid $15 million of debt service probably over the last 20 years. Again, what was right at the time and the way debt, and debt was issued at the time, well above my pay grade. But I think from the standpoint of moving forward, we know the golf course can pay its bills and pay its, pay this debt service and continue to make these improvements so that we can continue to do 50,000 rounds of golf and lead this area in the number of rounds of golf and revenues that we should be doing.
Yeah, as John said, I mean, the, the issues of duration and, you know, options and forms of, of, of debt, those, those are all, again, if there's a decision made, those are all things that need to continue to be explored. We just ran again, I think, I think there were two scenarios. It was a, it was either a 10 or 15-year level debt service scenario and the 20. The reason I referenced the 20 was just simply to note that the debt service on that 20-year note or, or, and again, I think that was a bank loan that the scenario was run on, is generally equivalent to the operating expense that's currently being paid as it relates to sanitary sewer and water as a result of those failing pond liners that are on the property.
And that's a great way to match the, the duration or the value to that. So I, I, I see that approach. I know we're probably closing up on the golf stuff, but I will end on a very positive note. Remember, as we started today's meeting with Mr. Rick Ryan, frequent golfer said the greens were very good this year. And I can tell you, if they're not, I hear about it. And no one's calling me, which is good.
That's good news, right?
So Kevin, shout out to you.
Yeah, great job. And Mark and Cameron on our maintenance crew and Paul, who have, they've, they've had a tough go in this last five months of dry spell, so.
And as long as we're talking about the success of food and beverage, I believe Friday night, the restaurant will be closed to the public because you have a very big outing on Friday.
We do, yes.
So for those of us who eat there on Friday night, we will be dispatched to someplace else.
See you Saturday.
I did come last Saturday, I did, I did, two Saturdays ago to make up for it, but hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Great.
Derek run away or is he still there?
No, he, he's coming up.
He's claiming that he's sick, I don't know.
He won't get far.
He's sick as well, yeah.
He's part of the thin orange line protecting us.
Good evening again. So obviously, we're here to discuss a little bit of the Public Works budget for 2025. Public Works is a little bit harder to follow in the, in the, in the budget just because it is a little bit of everywhere. Just real fast, just in terms of revenues that, that we do obviously bring in, just minor some things. We do bring in road encroachment permits, so we, we were a little good for this year. So we brought in about $68,000. That's what the utility companies pay us to open up our roads and, and put some new utilities in. Penn dot winter maintenance, that is for the payback for us to maintain a couple of Penn dot's roads. That's estimated to be about $11,000 this year. And the leaf assessment, we were on track for 2025 for $857,917. That's the $90 per property owner for the leaf collections this fall that will be beginning the first week in November. We are on track that, that, that fee that we did increase in 2024 should, will cover costs in 2025. I did run that analysis. So we, we will be covered there in terms of cost. Just looking at the, the funds here, I, I don't have page numbers in my book, but yes, go ahead.
While you're talking about that, should we talk about a second for the tub grinder? Very exciting news.
We did, we, we had great news. We did get that LSA, LSA or CFA funding for the tub grinder got approved.
Local share account.
That was local share, LSA. So we did get a grant, we did request a million dollars. So we got, I believe it's $827,000 approved. So we just need to work through some details and see what kind of equipment we could fit in that budget range. So that is great news. That'll keep the leaf operation moving, moving forward. And obviously the recycle yard, the machine that we currently have is about 20 years old doing that work for us. So in the general fund, Public Works, that is, that is Fund 01, starts on 409 and goes for two pages. You'll see various things did go up and down. And, and the reason for that is the other big funding mechanism that Public Works uses is liquid fuels. That is the money that comes from Penn dot charged by tax on the gas that, you know, everyone fills up in their cars. We get allocated that based upon how many miles of roads we have in our township that we maintain. That is obviously a little bit further back in the book, that's Fund 35. Our allocation for Penn dot this year in liquid fuels is about a million dollars, $1,300,000. That is down from 2024 and may decrease again in 2026 because more electric cars, less fuel tax would be being paid so that those funds are going down slightly. So what we did this year is try to help the general fund a little bit. In 2024, we tried to spend a little bit more labor. There are certain tasks that Public Works can do that is eligible to charge our labor to that fund. We were a little, it was a little aggressive of what we could do on that. We weren't able to hit that labor projection. So the, the next option is we could charge a lot of materials to liquid fuels. The asphalt that we buy for patching, the stone, pipe, things like that, vehicle parts, anything that works on the roads, we can charge there. So, so in 2025, what's that?
Sorry, traffic signal maintenance.
Traffic signal maintenance is another item, so that, that right now is, I think, covered in the police department usually covers that. We'll have to go out to bid with that, that's eligible for, for Penn dot liquid fuels. That, that'll pull about, I think it's about 70 some thousand dollars that'll come out of the general fund into liquid fuels expenses. So there were some pluses and minuses when you look at general versus liquid fuels. Overall, when you look at the bottom line for Public Works, it was an increase from 2024 of about $143,000. Two major cat reasons for that is in 2024 or 2025, we are contemplating the use of a contracted service for janitorial services for this building and the other couple of buildings. The reason for that is we're, we're limited to manpower. We do have a, a full-time gentleman that does quote unquote building maintenance janitorial. He spends the majority of his days cleaning, which doesn't help him for other tasks that need to be done in the building. So we're looking to potentially subcontract that out to, to janitorial services, you know, a couple of days a week to help with that deep cleaning so staff doesn't need to be bogged down with those little, little details. And then the other, the rest of that, 143 less 65 is labor increases. We're currently in contract negotiations, Public Works contract is due this, this December. So there is some penciled in budgetary numbers in there for labor, depending on how negotiations go. So that, that's about the general fund. In terms of capital expenses for this year, it's mostly equipment purchases. They are funded through two, two revenue sources. This year, we're going to use liquid fuels for purchase of a, a large dump truck and a small dump truck. And then we also have the road machinery. We're limited of how much equipment we could buy in the liquid fuels, depending on our on our fund balances, PennDOT limits that, so we're trying to utilize all that as much as possible to not hurt the road machinery fund, to look for a six-year projection to keep that millage at point three mils, you know, steady and and pay for the lease payments on that stuff.
Derek, I'm sorry, I just, and you touched on it, but some of the ideas in terms of utilization of liquid fuels for capital purchases, again, part part of the strategy associated with that is to is to essentially maintain the the future sort of capacity of of the existing millage rate in the in the road.
Correct, yeah. I run a six, yep, I ran a six-year analysis of the equipment that needs to be purchased over the next six years and replaced. The the road machinery fund would have actually needed a millage increase probably in two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven to pay for leases and vehicles. So by doing the capital, a couple of machines out of the the liquid fuels fund in two thousand and twenty-five, we could kind of keep that point three mil at least steady for the next projected six years, which is good, and not have a millage increase there. So that that allows us to do that. Anything else, David, was that, did I touch that right for you? Good, cool.
That's that's it, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. You've had a coughing episode. The then the then the next big thing, obviously, after, you know, buying some equipment, replacing some of the older trucks, a couple of the trucks have a hundred thousand miles, they're due, some of the larger dump trucks have, you know, low mileage, but they're twenty years old or getting close to twenty years old, so most useful life due to road salt and and degradation. The final thing that we kind of want to touch on tonight is the the biggest one that we started last year in two thousand and twenty-four is the road improvement fund. And obviously, that's how we're paying to mill and overlay our roadways in the township. Two thousand and twenty-four, we had that set as two mils, that brought in, that generated a revenue of approximately one million sixty-eight thousand dollars. I know I know in front of you, Allison does have, she did bump that up to an increase of two mils to bring that to four mils, to bring in a revenue of two point one seven one million dollars for road milling and paving. And again, it's it's an area we could discuss and talk, but just for context, I I kind of keep a three-year list of what what needs to be done in terms of our roads. And again, it's it's the stuff that I almost know about, I mean, there's always more things out there. But just for context, right now, the list of roads that I know that need to be paved, we're totaling a probably twenty-six miles over a hundred and forty miles we need to pave. That has a price tag of ten million six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in today's dollars. So the more we kick that down the road, that's going to grow and get bigger and bigger. So it obviously, if we if we want to keep the millage the same in the road improvement fund, that's that's totally fine, we could do about a million dollars a road, that'll be about two point five miles of that today's twenty-six miles. If we do an increase or or whatever the board so desires, we can we could possibly do closer to five point nine miles. On that list of roads, just again, for context, some of our roads haven't been paved since nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-eight, ninety-four, so they're they're due. So it's it's, we just need to start planning of how we want to tackle those twenty-six miles. And again, there's some large price tag roads. I mean, Township Line Road is going to need to be done in the next five years. It's it's, you know, it's a significant price tag, you know, you got over a mile road, large width, I mean, that's almost eight hundred thousand dollars to Township Line Road. And some of that's got to be budgeted with Middletown Township too, because they share some of that, so just to give you guys an idea.
And Derek, is that, are you using that new program, the iPhone program yet?
The program is, we we had training last week, the week before. We're trying to roll that out, we just got the new iPhones that we need, so we're trying to roll that out for leaf collection season, so as the trucks drive and we're gathering that data, so we can hopefully decrease to twenty-six miles, but I think it's probably going to unfortunately increase. But yes, that that data is going to be collected over the two thousand and twenty-four winter into the two thousand and twenty-five spring. So hopefully, when I sit here next year, we actually have some good graphs and and just show and a plan moving forward. But we just need to plan for something, obviously.
So I was going to say, on the, under the four-mil scenario, it's two point one seven, and then you have one point three in liquid fuels. So is that three point four million for roads then roughly?
No, because we decided in two thousand and twenty-four to use liquid fuels to help the general fund. That's moving materials that we purchased, equipment parts, labor as much as we can, you know, equipment purchases. So if you wanted to do that and so desire, the general fund's going to hurt a million dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we'd be looking at two point one essentially is for road repair. Okay.
Correct.
And for perspective, when I first joined the board, it was four hundred thousand, but it was being cut from eight hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. So I'm glad that we're we're still not where we need to be.
Unfortunately, that's the, probably over the last twenty years, it's been underfunded, you know, unfortunately, and you're at a point that, again, due to these ages, it's it's coming due at once. And that's the thing, you don't want to go today and do ten ten million dollars because you're just doing it for a board thirty years from now. So you just got to chip away at it.
In terms of the roads that you've listed, and I don't think we have that list yet, but.
I I did not give it to you, just for the fact of, again, it could change.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, is the biologic stuff that you're going to run, do you think it's going to change some severity, because you might uncover stuff you hadn't seen previously?
I I would say that seventy-five percent of the roads that I have are severe that need to be done in two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay.
That's that would be just my guess right now. I mean, for example, Makefield Road needs, that needs to get done next year between Yarlemarsville to soften. It's in terrible shape, it's a lot of volume, we got to do that, that's four hundred thousand dollars, you know, just to give you an idea.
Okay. Go ahead, sure.
One of the things we we've been throwing around for the last year, maybe two, is a potential stormwater management fee, which is not a tax, it's a fee. So two things I'm wondering, and I don't know that we have an answer just yet from a legal perspective, or I know there was a court case that our prior solicitor was kind of following, but I don't know that we ever got a final final call on what what it would, how a stormwater management fee could or could not be implemented in town. That being said, in other places around the country and around the Commonwealth where it's been implemented, it's been a huge, provided a huge benefit to the Public Works Department specifically because of it generates a fee, not a tax, and you can use it, you know, for for Public Works projects. I'm wondering, I guess we need an update in terms of the court case and what we're able to do, and then as a result of that, seeing if there's any opportunity, let's just assume for now that we can do it, if there's any opportunity in two thousand and twenty-five to get it implemented so that it can take some pressure off of our tax base here. And I know there's no answer right now.
Yeah, David, no, but, yeah, just David.
Yeah, I mean, in in terms of the potential of implementing in twenty, I I think there can be implementation steps in two thousand and twenty-five. You know, again, if we're going to go through the process of establishing a defense fee, I and again, educating sort of the community on that, I would I would expect that that would take, that would take two thousand and twenty-five to to sort of accomplish with the potential implementation date in two thousand and twenty-six. You know, the other sort of thing that that is related, just from, you know, of funding and financing sort of discussion standpoint, as was reported, I think, at our last meeting, you know, the township was the recipient of funding through DCD's Strategic Management Planning Program, in which, you know, I think some of this sort of multi-year trend information will come out of that. And then in turn, there's going to be discussions about both the expense side of the ledger and and tools that are available on on the on the revenue side. And so I I would I would imagine that that stormwater fee and the discussion related to that would be, you know, would would likely be something integral to to that to that discussion.
Yeah.
I do have some information from one of the law firms that participated in that case is in filing an amicus brief on behalf of the Pennsylvania, you know, Authorities Association, that I can get to Maureen and and also to the members of the board in terms of, you know, the realities sort of post Westchester, depending on, you know, depending on how that that decision plays out. But I I don't know that there's going to be a, you know, a hundred percent decision that that results in 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 there not being the permissibility of of implementation of stormwater management fee. There's specific language in the Second Class Township Code that permits us to levy it, as well as there's specific language that the legislature passed within the Authorities Act as well. Again, the the case in Westchester is a little bit nuanced because it involves a home rule borough, so there there's some nuance, it's not, it's not just, I I don't think you're going to end up with a court decision that says that you can't, can't do it, because there's been explicit language put into law that says you can do it.
Yeah. Short version for me is I would love to see that move forward sooner rather than later, so that we can leverage it in any way we can. And then I'm also curious, you know, when we, over the course of the last several months, when we've been looking at various projects and it that the township's implemented and whatnot, the pool, some of the other infrastructure projects, basketball courts and other things, we've we've seen some nice synergies maybe, or some nice teamwork between a couple of different departments, primarily Park and Rec and Public Works. I see Public Works also working with the golf course tonight, which is nice to hear and see. So I'm wondering, at least on the face of it, it seems like there are a lot of folks in both departments that have some shared skill sets or complementary skill sets, where they may be leveraged in Public Works versus Park and Rec. So I'm wondering if if there's been any consideration for, not consolidation, but some maybe some reorganization of the departments to allow for those efficiencies and potential, not not losing staff by any means, but just trying, maybe some more efficient implementation of, I'll say, Public Works-related projects with our whole staff versus just the Public Works staff, if if that makes sense.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, and and those discussions are are taking place, you know, again, as as I think you rightfully pointed out, you know, there there have been some, there's been a lot better sort of cross-utilization across departments, again, leveraging sort of the strengths. And I think in in part, you saw a demonstration of that with with our discussion related to some of the capital needs at the golf course. So from a from a management perspective, from an administration perspective, that is absolutely a goal and something that, you know, we'll continue to have conversations about, yes.
That's good.
So Derek, you got out relatively easy, too.
Yeah, right.
So before we let you go, is there any public comment that we've missed? I don't see any when coming up, any questions, I'm not seeing any, so you're free, Derek.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll send, I'll send you a little packet, just like Tim said, and roads, just so you guys can, in your in your spare time, read it on your phone.
I've already gotten a lovely presentation from Director Chamberlain, popped into my email already, so. He's got mad PowerPoint skills, just saying.
Not that good.
So moving on to our engineers report, general project update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow members of the board. As many of you know, I'm Melanie Aronis, I'm an engineer at Remington and Vernick, I work with Isaac, and I'm filling in for him tonight, and I have a few engineering updates for you. For the Highland Drive Drainage Project, the old utility pole was removed, so I believe all aerial utilities are complete at this point. The water company continues to work on their relocation of the water line and laterals, and the remaining underground utilities will be done during the construction phase. The township purchase of the contact culvert was tabled at the October ninth meeting. Some alternative options and costs will be presented once they're prepared by the Public Works Department and Remington and Vernick, and we'll present them at an upcoming meeting. We're also coordinating with the township solicitor for the easement documents, which we've prepared, and I believe they've been okayed by the resident, so we'll continue to move forward with that. For the Woodside Road Bike Path, Verizon is almost done removing all the cables from their old poles, and they're still targeting to have them, all the poles removed by the end of October. And we've received updated pricing for another fence option for the Woodside Road Bike Path, which we're reviewing right now with township staff. For the Taylorsville Road Sidewalk and Drainage Improvement Project, we met with township staff on October sixteenth to review the draft plans. We received some good feedback on the design for that. We're going to be scheduling a meeting with some of the utility companies just to talk about any potential conflict coordination and just to get the ball rolling with that. And we'll begin preliminary discussions with DCNR and PennDOT. For the Fieldstone Harris Project, we met with ARNA Engineering, that's the design engineer for that project, just to discuss the technical comments from the May review letter. So we did that earlier this month, and they believe their their resubmission hopefully will be soon and is forthcoming.
I'm sorry, is that the the Harris Track? Is that the the one off of Edgewood that we're talking about, the former dump?
Yes, yes, that is correct, yes.
So the former, the former dump is potentially coming back?
Alleged.
No, I think I think we can confirm that it was a dump, whether it was.
Yeah, again, that, there's two parcels, as I understand it, and again, Jim can speak to this better than I, but former unregulated landfill is on one of the parcels, and then there's 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 the other parcel that previously was part of.
Oh, that's the alleged part, James, the allegedly, there's no dumping on the other part. Okay, got it.
Yeah, we have to protect ourselves.
Yeah, so hopefully, that submission will be coming soon, and then we have.
We're not hoping.
We have some grants in progress as well. I think the earliest we may hear from them would be in November after the election, but we're still waiting to hear back on some of those. And that concludes my engineering updates. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions.
Thanks, Melanie. We appreciate that. I'm not seeing any public comment or supervisor questions. We'll move on to Agenda Item Ten, Golf. So with that, ten, Item Ten A, consider authorizing Township Manager to execute a sixty-month lease purchase agreement, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm not seeing any discussion. Interest of full disclosure, my sister once worked for DeLaga Land and Public Finance, but now she works for a large bank, so with that, I don't think I'm conflicted, just for the full record. Okay, excellent. With that, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the motion passed four zero. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten B, consider authorizing purchase of a Toro Sand Pro five forty at the cost of thirty thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents from Turf and Equipment Supply Company under CoStar's contract, number four four zero 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 two eight three four two.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions? People like the Toro Sand Pro, so I think, I'm not seeing any comment. With that, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the motion passed four zero. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten C, consider authorizing the purchase of a top dresser at the cost of fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from Lawn and Supply Company and authorize the trade end of a used Turf Cove fifteen thirty top dresser.
So moved.
Second.
If I could just, just a couple notes, so this, you will note that there is no CoStar's contract that's noted on the agenda. However, there there were, as required by law, there were three quotes that were written quotes that were obtained. This is the the lowest of the three written quotes that was obtained.
And it's below twenty thousand dollars, too. So and the bidding threshold, right?
It's below the bidding threshold, it was above the telephonic written quoting threshold, but below, but below the bidding threshold. But we do have three quotes, so I I just wanted, for the record, just wanted to make clear.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion and a second for this? With that, I'll call the question, all those in favor of Agenda Item Ten C signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the motion passed four zero. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten D, consider authorizing lease purchase of an air raider at a cost of fifty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars from Lawn and Turf Golf Supply Company under CoStar's contract four four zero 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 two eight three two nine, and authorize the township manager to enter in a sixty-month lease purchase agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions on this?
I was going to let you breathe.
Okay, with that, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the motion passed four zero. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eleven.
I was going to let you breathe.
Okay. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the motion passed for zero. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 11, Township Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before you authorize a resolution relating to an automated red light enforcement grant township had received in, in 2018 in the amount of, of 260,000 dollars to make improvements to the intersection of Big Oak and Makefield Roads. The current deadline for completion of the improvements, per the grant agreement, is December the 31st of, of this year, of 2024. PennDOT has agreed to extend the completion deadline until December 21st of 2026. The resolution before you authorize is the chair or the township manager to execute the extension agreement. We would recommend approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion since I've been working on this since 2018. Might as well keep it going.
A second.
Okay, with that.
And I can make a comment on that, Mr. Chair, if that's.
My work?
So the, the intent is not to wait until 2026 to complete this project. The issue with the extended duration of these projects, obviously, if you submit a grant with costs that are determined in 2017, you know, a, a grant at 260,000, which was once, you know, sufficient to, to pay for those improvements, is likely no longer sufficient to fully pay for those improvements. So the intent, despite the extension, is to, is to advance this project as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other comment. I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record reflect that the motion passed for zero. General updates?
I, I don't have anything, Mr. Chair. If there's any questions that members of the board may have, happy to respond to those.
I'm looking both ways. I don't see any. With that, we'll move on to the solicitors' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The record should reflect that we, the supervisors present this evening met in a very short executive session prior to the supportive supervisors' meeting to discuss litigation matters, or a litigation matter. I will try to be quick in my updates. I do have a few of them. Number one, the employee handbook, which we were tasked with reviewing, revising, and actually drafting a good part of it, has been, at least in draft form, completed and presented to the township manager, so that is under review. The police pension amendment, as well as the changes required to the wireless ordinance that were required by the Bucks County Planning Commission, both have been revised. They will be before you next meeting for review, discussion, and for voting upon. As you may recall, we provided you with a copy of the historic demolition ordinance, or our proposal for the same. Just this afternoon, we did receive feedback from the Historical Commission, which we will review their comments and incorporate as necessary, or at least bring those to your attention for the proposed changes. Just in the past few days, we were tasked with working on an ordinance to codify noted stop intersections within the township, and we are going to do that. And finally, as mentioned by the township engineer in her report, we are working on easement agreements related to Highland Drive. So hopefully, we will finalize those in the next few weeks and bring that to an end. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, moving on to Agenda Item 13, Supervisors' Report. I have none at this time. Supervisor Grunier?
No, they, my primary one presented already, and they did a great job, so I get nothing.
Supervisor Ross isn't here. Supervisor Blundy?
No.
Supervisor McCartney?
Nothing to report.
Awesome. Moving on to other business. I'm not seeing any other business. Moving on to Agenda Item 15, Appointments/Reappointments. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll try and draw them all in together. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the following individuals to their respective board or commission. Peter Soler, zoning hearing board reappointment. DeJinder Gill, planning commission reappointment. Stephen Hines, historical architecture, architectural review board reappointment. Lubalastik, historical architecture review board reappointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments with that? I'll call the question. All those in favor of the reappointments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record reflect that the vote was for zero. At this time, we're moving on to Agenda Item 16, additional public comment on non-agenda items if needed. And if you notice, I'm speaking quicker. It's because I like to meet the, look and, I don't see anybody. There's nobody on the phone. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Have a good night.